Problem, we'll leave you, leave it in your.
Preparing to livestream. This is incredibly exciting for all two people waiting to look at it.
You never know, you never know.
Okay, hang about. Okay, I think we could be, could be in action. I'm going to put the, um. Oh, hello. Okay. I think we're, I think we're live. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to put the link in this, in this chat in this group. So you will have it.
Oh, okay.
Is that a problem?
Um, would have been easier for me if you'd.
I can't, what can I do really on here? Um.
Text me.
I can text it to you. One second. Yeah, I can do it on here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we are live now.
We are live, okay?
Over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Alex. So we understand the public connection has been made for the, uh, the public, the September council meeting. So, uh, good evening councillors, um, thank you for attending the September meeting. I hope you had a reasonable summer break over August in these very unusual and difficult times. Uh, I think for the foreseeable future, we may be continuing these Zoom meetings, but we'll take it on a monthly basis. But as I say, thanks for attending this evening and thank you to Bob also, our town clerk. Um, we've just had the, uh, finished the presentation from Mike Deegan, uh, which is a private presentation on the town hall floor. So we're now commencing the council meeting proper. Bob, can I hand over to you please for any apologies for absence and declarations of interest?
Yeah, um, as regards to apologies, we've, we've got to record the apologies of Joe Atkins and Jean Dan. Um, uh, but apart from that, I've not had any other apologies up to now anyway. Um, and declarations of interest, I, I have none at the moment.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Um, I have to apologize for item one on the agenda. That was a copy over from last month because clearly the appointment of officers, et cetera, was completed last month, so it shouldn't have appeared on, uh, on the September agenda. So apologies for, uh, that. So item one on the agenda as published is scotched. So, um, we'll go to.
Actually, yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, I think I ought to say that's my mistake actually. Uh, so, you know, the mayor's apologised, but really I should be apologising because I went, I went, carried on and should have deleted it off, so.
I'll, I'll share the blame because I should have overviewed it, but not to worry. But thank you for that anyway, Bob, but, uh, we'll just scotch item one. That was an error. It shouldn't have been on there. So moving on to section two or item two rather, the minutes of the previous meeting, which of course this time was the July meeting, we didn't have a meeting in August. Um, hopefully everyone has seen the copy of the July minutes. Are there any comments at all on the July minutes of meeting or, um, can we pass those as a true record? Uh, any comments at all, please councillors?
No.
No? Okay. Well, if no one has any issues, and this is on the, um, the non-confidential part of the minutes of the meeting, I should say, the non-confidential sections. Uh, if we're happy with that, could I have a proposer and a second please? Thank you, Alex. Alex and Olivia, proposer and second, uh, and a show of hands please to pass that if I may. Olivia, you, thank you. Okay, that's, that's taken. So, uh, the, uh, the minutes of the, uh, non-confidential section of the last of the July meeting are passed. Um, uh, as a true record. So thank you for that. Item three, uh, police matters, Bob. Any update, please, please on police matters?
No, I'd, um, I'd like, what I'd like to just mention is that, uh, we have had over the summer quite, um, a difficult time. Uh, start of the summer at Milo Recreation Ground, and it seems that the locking of gates has made a big difference. Uh, it's restricted unwarranted access. I'd like to thank Olivia because Olivia's been a great help for stepping in and locking on the, the late nights actually related to the community centre. So thank you very much for that, Olivia.
I, I'd like just to reflect that also because Bob's told me. So thanks very much for your help with the locking of the gates, Olivia.
No problem.
No, great help. And I don't know whether Olivia can cast any light on this, but I, I, I mean, several weeks ago, we had quite a serious incident up there. I never did find out what happened. But when, when it came to opening the gates, the police were up there and actually restricted access for a couple of hours. And, uh, I, I, I never found out what happened, but did you, Olivia, find out?
Um, the most that I've heard, I haven't heard anything official of the police because they did say to me that they may be getting back in touch. Um, I've had no contact since, but according to some of the locals, there was a wake at the Rovers that ran to quite late in the night. And there was some sort of, I don't know if it was just a physical altercation or a full out fight. Um, but apparently someone was very seriously injured. Um, so I think they were obviously there looking for evidence and all sorts, so.
It was a one off incident, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank.
But, but in, but in general, we understand that with the locking of the gates, the antisocial behaviour has been much reduced and is under far better control.
Yes, I think there'll be the occasional flare up, uh, like, I mean, quite humorous sometimes because one morning I got there at quarter eight. Some chap was standing the wrong side of the gate, in fact, on the field side. And he says, let me out. I said, have you been there all night? He says, no. I came in over the fence at the back of, at the back of the field. So I let him out and he was, uh, he was quite jokey about it, but so.
Interactions I've had with, you know, you see your regular groups of, I don't know if youths is the right thing to call them, um, but the regular kids that are down there, they understand the locking of the gate now. Um, so if I go down quite late in the evening and they see me, they're straight, I don't even have to ask anymore. They come straight out. I think it is a, quite a good understanding that we've got with locals.
Yeah, I think it's working well, Olivia.
Yeah, it is.
You know, as you say, with the locals, it is because they know the implications. It's when these other people drift in from the Neaton, et cetera, they cause problems. It, it seems to be working well.
Good, thank you. Uh, is that it on police then, Bob?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you for that update. And I'm glad we're seeing an improvement there at the community centre facility. Uh, item four, progress and actions then please, Bob.
Yeah, uh, just go over, go, uh, over the page. If we go to item one seven nine. Uh, first one is the neighbourhood plan, which seems to have been going on for ages, but it's been held up with the virus problem. Um, I've now, uh, registered what they call, uh, similar to what Mike Deegan said, an expression of interest with locality. And in fact, have submitted an application for grants, a grant up to, um, ten thousand pounds. I'm not saying we will need ten thousand. But, uh, it will, you know, we can go up to ten thousand if it's successful. So very pleased with that. So I have spoken to, uh, Louise, who's a great help at Kirkwells. So that is now moving again after our lockdown period.
Yes, I guess things came to a bit of ground to a bit of a halt, did they during lockdown, in terms of Kirkwells and, and, uh, other grant facilities?
Yep, it did. And I, I think Dawn's arrived. Have you done? Can you hear us? No.
Just connecting to the other side.
Just hang on, shall we see if we can?
By the way, I missed, I might have missed it earlier. Did we hear anything from Jenny? Does she give apologies?
I, I've not heard anything actually.
No.
Um. I presume obviously, obviously Jean Dan and Joe, Joe Atkins, it's a, a technology problem.
Yes, I've contacted them both in fairness. They're both aware that we're continuing with the internet meetings, which they, uh, they can't facilitate, they can't get on. So I think Joe's probably stacked a couple of things for Bob to bring up, but they, they are understanding. And we're keeping them appraised of what's going on with the copies of the minutes, et cetera.
That's good. Oh, Dawn's with us. Are you with us, Dawn?
Hello, Dawn. I'm not sure Dawn can hear us.
No.
Uh, we'll carry on. I mean.
All right, carry on.
Now hopefully Dawn can connect shortly. Uh, sorry, Bob. So that was the neighbourhood plan, okay?
Yeah, neighbourhood plan. Going to the additional notice board, uh, made contact with Anker. He, he's going to, given him the sizes. We, we did go through this before the virus, but we've kickstarted it again. Given him the sizes, he's going to, uh, reorganise his advertising on the wall. And he's, uh, he's going to tell me during the next, uh, week or two exactly where we can put it. So what I would like to ask councillors is, can I have permission to go and purchase the, um, notice board? Because I think we're very close to, to installing it, and so does, I don't mean by it before Anker showed me where it's going. But as soon as he showed me where we've got the space and we've got the space there on the wall, um, is it okay if I then purchase the notice board?
Do, what, what, what sort of cost are we talking about?
Uh, well, the, we're talking about hundred and fifty to two hundred pounds.
Okay. I think that of course, can we just have a show of hands on that? I mean, it comes within. Okay, that's, yes, please proceed with that.
So agreed, you're pretty successful. Uh, Olivia's doing battle and doing very well with the website. And the town hall painting, I think that one's going to roll over to next year, uh, in the sense of, um, uh, the, it's the outside of the town hall that, uh, that needs doing. And the weather's going to change shortly and you just cannot get contractors anyway, because the ones who are going to, first of all, if you want scaffolding, you know, this, it's, it's difficult to get it. I, I know from personal experience, but that's going to roll on till next year, I think. Moving down the page, Bollards, that's a, a good battling point. And I know the town mayor and myself have had, uh, conversations with councillor Joe Atkins. And I thought the best thing is to request a site meeting with Tim Hemmingsley. Uh, because Joe could attend that if we do social distancing. So, um, uh, that's what I've done. I've requested a meeting. Tim hasn't come back to me and, and confirmed, I've asked for a couple of dates and times and he hasn't come back to me yet, but that's pretty normal with Tim. It can take a time and then suddenly you get all of them come through in one go.
Yes.
Um, Millhouse, uh, again, I think the town mayor had a conversation with Joe exactly the same as I did. Uh, where she suggested that, um, the guy at LDC, Craig Jordan, maybe the best option is to invite him to a site meeting to see how well the Budlivers are growing in the side of the Millhouse. And I can tell you, they're doing very well. Uh, the one at the top of the building is enormous. Um, and I think, I think the, the masonry risk is ever present.
Just, just to step back a second. I mean, yes, Craig Jordan, he's, he's a senior officer there, but he's not a councillor, he's an officer. Um, Alex, did you have any joy with Doug Pullen at all on this? Do you remember we spoke to you, possibly yourself and or James talking to Doug?
I did. Um, very pleased to hear the Budley is growing. The butterflies will be enjoying that.
Yeah.
I, um, I went to speak with Doug after the last meeting in July and he just coincided with him, um, selfishly, uh, having the birth of his grandchild. Um, so I left him alone for a couple of weeks. Uh, and then, uh, and then I emailed him and I heard nothing. And then the summer happened, which obviously people disappear. And so I spoke to him a couple of weeks ago, um, and he did apologise for his, his, uh, lack of communication. And I brought up our, our favourite friend, the Mill House, and he said, um, that it's the first he'd heard of it, which was, uh, which was interesting to say the least, because he's been dropped many an email. Um, so he said he will speak about it and it's on his priority list. Um, don't know how long his priority list is. Um, so maybe we should, uh, or I will drop him another email after this meeting. Um, but it's a shame not to hear from Barry or, or, or James about it.
No, it, it would be helpful if you can just keep the pot bubbling, Alex, and drop him an email. It's a bit naughty because I, I, the last civic event before lockdown in Lichfield, I coincidentally was sat, sat next to Doug Pullen at the event. So I, I couldn't resist the opportunity of bringing this up. And I did drop him an email at the time. I can't in fairness remember whether that was pre or post Craig Jordan's response saying they didn't think it was a good idea to issue a section two one five. Um, Margaret saying it was before. Uh, so he's, um, I know he's a very busy man, he's Doug, and he may have forgotten that technically it's not the first he's heard about it. Um, one thing that we do know, and I think even Bob, I think Joe also talking to the people in the vicinity, um, I don't know who she's talking to, but we, we're getting an understanding that development of that site may be getting closer. Which of course, if that happens, that house itself will come down and be replaced by a contemporary building that we've seen. Uh, oh, plan overviews of, but of course we don't know time scale yet. And I think one of the reasons, uh, Lichfield said they weren't going to do anything was because, you know, the development was imminent. Well, you know, the, the owners are likely to say that just to, just to squash the argument. Uh, but I don't know if the reality is that the development is going to become closer. I really don't know, but in the meantime, sorry.
No, no, sorry, Brian, please carry on.
I'm running on a little bit, but basically, you know, we need, we, we still, beside that, even if it does happen sooner or later, we could do with somebody enforcing the owners to improve the physical appearance of that building. So, Alex, if you can continue to talk to Doug, uh, you know, please, please use that leverage.
Is, is, so, so I was going to say, is, is there any kind of email chain I could forward on or, or anything? Because I keep, I feel like I keep starting the same email all the time and saying, did you know about this? Is there anything I could push on to him that, that, from Craig maybe that might help?
Did you, have you not got a copy of Craig Jordan's long response? Alex, have you not got that?
I may have, to be honest with you.
I'll send it to you again. I'll send it.
Yeah, I just, if I could say, give him something to say follow up on rather than start the conversation again, that'd be maybe.
Yes, 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 yes. I'll, I may have sent it to you before, but don't worry, I'll send it.
I'm sure, I'm sure you did, to be honest, Brian, but I may have slept since then.
No, that, that's not a problem and you can use it. I agree with what you're saying. You can use that as ammunition. You know, can he, uh, provide us some leverage against the opinions of his, one of his directors?
Yep.
Well, one of the developments is that, uh, and I think this fits in with the general malaise that we get from Lichfield District Council. I have, I have heard this week that, uh, well, today actually, that Ashfield land who have been procrastinating about, uh, the site in general for at least three years, have sold it on to another developer. And I, I am struggling to get, uh, details of the new, uh, developer, a new omen of the site. And, um, uh, when, when I do, I suggest, Mr. Mayor, that we try and get, um, a meeting with them. I know this is the third time I've mentioned site meetings. I won't mention it again, but I think it'd be a good idea to get a, a site meeting with them. Almost like that American theme film, but I won't say the, the last word, meet the so and so's.
Yes.
Uh, because, uh, tell them, you know, starters will mean to go on with these people. Um, that they also, there is, there's crazy things cropping up like, let people, whether authorised or not, organising Halloween parties in, in the Tolsons Mill building, which you can imagine was a high risk of, uh, uh, bringing it down. I mean, by accident, accident, I mean.
Sure.
The sooner that we make contact with the new owners, if it's true, uh, I think the better for everyone in, in the Paisley area. And, uh, you know, put our case and see if they're as hardball as Ashfield. Uh, I can't believe there's, there's another one as bad as Ashfield about, but you never know.
Well, I would agree, Bob. If we get that intelligence of the new owner and we speak to them, it may be that their intention is to develop sooner than, than later, which, which would improve the amenity of the whole area if, if it's fully developed. You know, as we've seen the plans around the retention of the mill itself, but, uh, who knows? Who knows?
Yep. Um, battling on speed watch, uh, I, I've not pushed this one because the controller of the scheme has had a operate, a major operation. And I'm just leaving that until, uh, recovery really.
Yeah.
Grant funding, we know. Dunstall Lane, the additional litter bin, uh, town mayor and myself, we know that that's installed now. So it'll be going, it's in action and we're going on our, um, uh, charge sheet from Litchfield District Council.
Bob, can I just say, um, I saw a Facebook post on the, uh, on the Little Pickers page, which has a few hundred people on Rob Pritchard's page thanking us for the bin. Um, so that's nice. They've given us some recognition.
I was going to say, could you let him move? Clearly he does already. So thank you for that.
I'll just make a note of that. So thanks from Rob Pritchard. Yep.
Yeah, he said, he sent a nice little photo with it as well. So he's, he's obviously enjoying the bin.
Good.
Moving further down, highway matters. Um, we, we know that we've got an uphill battle about Evans Croft, but, uh, I just wanted to mention, uh, that, um, Brian, you communicated with Tim regarding the lady who wants to set up a, a cycling scheme. Uh, either two wheel or three wheel cycling, uh, crew in the area. Um, and basically that's it on this first part.
Yeah. I, on that subject, I'll bring it up again under correspondence, Bob, but, but thanks for mentioning. Okay, so, um, we're clear then on progress, support and action so far. Um, thank you for that. Um, next item, um, item five on our, uh, current agenda, town mayor's announcements. Um, clearly with COVID, there have been no civic engagements, uh, in the last couple of months. So I've got nothing to report on civic engagements. Just to reiterate what I said at the beginning of the meeting, I think councillors, we will review on a monthly basis how we hold these meetings. But as far as I can see going forward, we are likely to continue with Zoom meetings. And, uh, for the foreseeable future, but we will review that monthly. Bob is taking advice from, uh, listens to Staffordshire Parish Council Association and the National Association for Local Councils, NALC. So we hear what they, um, recommend nationally and basically we'll follow that advice. But I can't see things changing in the immediate future, but we will review matters and report how we will carry out these meetings on a monthly basis. And thank you, by the way, to both Alex and Olivia, who very rapidly today sorted out a specific Zoom account for the town council rather than you guys using your personal account. So thank you for doing that. If there's been any expenditure of money, please pass that through and you'll get a cheque from the town block. Bob, yes?
Yes, I think what's come into my mind as thinking about the Zoom meetings, we don't know how long they're going to go on. If we could have a resolution agreeing that Jean and Joe can have, uh, can, uh, have, uh, enter apologies, uh, while we are having the Zoom meetings. I'm trying to avoid a problem there. And, uh, if, if councillors would agree, if we could have a proposal and a second, uh, that we've got a minute in there saying that Joe and Jean can have absence, uh, or can enter apologies while we're having the Zoom.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I'm happy to, to propose or second that. Maybe worth adding on just explicitly. Um, that, um, we will override the six month rule, um, as a result of the pandemic, something like that.
Actually, that's what I was thinking about actually, Alex. So six, six month rule override, good word that. Um, so I've got a proposer, Alex, second up.
Second list.
About Margaret.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. And let's take a vote on that just to make sure we're, um, fully, fully compliant. Thank you very much. So that's passed then, Bob. And thank you for bringing that up. So the apologies for Joe and Jean will continue during this situation. Just make a personal note of that. Okay, uh, Bob, um, I wanted to bring something up about ongoing issues with War Memorial. Is it relevant to do that after Clark's report, do you think, Rob, and progress support?
I'm about to bring that up in Clark's report, so.
Okay, let's leave, let's leave it till that then. Okay, that, fine, thank you. So, um, thank you for that. So we're done with town mayor's announcements. Item six on the agenda, questions to the mayor, the committee chairman, deputy mayor or town clerk, understanding order eleven. Have any questions being received at all, please?
No, Mr. Mayor, not at all.
No questions received. Okay, so item six done with. So in that case, Bob, item seven is the Clark's report. If you'd like to proceed with that, please.
Yeah, we've got three things to bring up. The first one is that, um, I think with, um, I don't know whether it's in myself or the town mayor, because, Brian, have you got contacts with the Paisley Church? Or shall I make contact? I'll tell you where I'm coming from. We're getting closer to Remembrance Sunday. And I, I don't know how the ball's going to bounce when we get to that date. I suppose nobody does. But I think we ought to consider it and see what we think about it. So, uh, shall I?
Could you? Yes, please. I mean, since Carol left, I don't have a direct contact. So if you could contact whoever the current secretary is at the church, Bob, and make representation, and, and that's a good point, carry that forward to see what they, uh, how they propose to drive this under the current restrictions.
Yep, okay. The other thing I just wanted again to, uh, bring this, well, I meant, Brian, you know about this and Olivia does. Um, and it is that, um, when the community centre, uh, resumed bookings, uh, Olivia got in touch as regards to the NHS midwives. And thank you very much, Olivia, this one. I don't know how long it's going to go on for, but, uh, the midwives are using the youth annex, uh, on a daily basis. And, um, at the moment they seem very happy. The only thing I've got, uh, on there is that as, as we get nearer the winter, that building, that end of the building, I mean, uh, the community centre's okay. The heating system in there is pretty poor. And I think I'll do a bit of research with them as to, and I've mentioned this to the town mayor. Do a bit of research with them as to whether they see it long term. And that, unless Olivia, you know whether they, they go in long term. But if they're going to go long term for, say, 12 months, I think it might pay to, uh, invest in a, a storage heater of some reasonable size in there to warm the place up because those war, those electric heaters on the wall, they're very noisy and also, uh, they take quite a time to warm the place up. So if I could keep you posted on that, um, I don't know whether you've heard anything, Olivia, have you?
Um, well, uh, originally they were meant to be going back into the Robert Peel at the end of July, beginning of August, um, because it was the same for my mum. Uh, but it's looking like the Robert Peel is not going to resume normal service for quite a while now, especially because they've just instated the, um, COVID testing point in the car park. So I don't know if anyone's been down there and seen that. There's a whole system where people can go in for, for coronavirus tests. Um, so it's looking like everything is still either out of service there or over at Burton and Derby. So it could be a while. It really could.
Well, having, although we were, we were a bit reluctant in the early days, it seems to be a win win for both the midwives and ourselves because it's good revenue for us. And if they're happy with the, uh, working up there, um, it, it seems to be a good solution and, uh, long may it continue. But I would agree with Bob that the heating isn't brilliant. So possibly councillors, unless anyone's got any other opinion, we let Bob do some research into maybe get quotations for alternative heating methods and, and, you know, see where we go from there.
And can I just pick up a quick point on the one before, Bob? I've got no input on heating unfortunately, but, um, I've just found out that the Tamworth um, Memorial, uh, Day, uh, in November hasn't made a decision. Um, I think they're umming and ahing over what to do. Um, and I've just had it confirmed that it definitely would be the church's decision as we know. Uh, but Tamworth haven't made the decision, he would just let you know.
So the best route is to go to the church and.
Go to St Paul's and ask them, yes.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Alex. Uh, finally, uh, the other thing I was going to bring up was the memorial and, um, where we, we, do you know, Brian, what the name of those, those guys who came along to see us, uh, at the memorial?
MG Evans.
That's it. MG Evans came along to have a look and they, they did say to, uh, to the town mayor and myself that this one was a bit of a, a bit of a big out of their, their range of operation. So I got in touch then with a, uh, a memorial, uh, guy, Derbyshire Memorials, and he, he was going to come down, then he cancelled. Then he went on to that two weeks holiday and he's now said to me, he's so busy, he can't, doesn't know when he's going to come down. So I got in touch with the memorials trust again. Um, and got information off them as regards to our, our type of memorial. Um, and that led me to the National Association of Memorial Masons. Now I've taken photographs of the memorial, three or four of them, sent them to the association. They have told me they can pretty well see exactly what's needed, but, well, I, I mean, memorial is a new subject to me really. But evidently, um, these guys, um, specialise in different types of work on different types of material. So the association have been very good and they're, they're going through, uh, they, well, they've gone through their list of members as to who um, specialises in that sort of material that's on, uh, War Memorial. They've sent on the photographs to them. So we're waiting for a response from, from them. One of the problems is that these guys are spread all over the UK and, um, that's going to be a big influence. Uh, so although we've got them in the Midlands, there are others north of England. So the, the Association of Memorial Masons have been excellent. So we're just waiting for a response from them. So see what they've got to say.
Okay, so really. Okay, so really it depends that they can judge the type of material that we got presumably and will. Organise somebody who's specialist in that. I guess they'd need to cite us at some point, but we've got to see what develops from your contacts.
Yes, and the other thing is this association is recommended by the memorial trust. And of course, the first thing we will do is then go to the memorial trust for a request to grant. So if it's on one of their approved organisations, it's better than in a way. Because I think, Brian, you'll probably confirm, you sort of got the feeling from MG Evans, this isn't going to be an easy one. And the, I did take up close up shots of the top there where it's really weathered badly. And I've no idea how much it's going to cost, so let's stand by and see what happens.
Okay, Alex, you wanted to make a point.
Yeah, thanks for sorting that for us, Bob, and apologies for the giant can of worms I've opened in your life. But I hope it can turn into a good thing and obviously make the memorial a good. Presuming it will cost more than the amount we raised in fundraising, but like you said, I'm sure we can apply for some grants and maybe top it up with the fundraising we've been given. A logistical issue is that the money couldn't just sit in the just giving account. It's a bit like a dormant bank account. If it sat there for too long, it would have been taken off us. So it's inserted itself nicely into my account. And as much as I'm looking forward to them holidays next year, I think I need to remove it pretty sharpish. So could I? Could you send me the bank details for Faisley Town Council? I've got 15 hundred quid that needs to be plumbed into it.
Send you the bank details.
Yeah, just so I can send it out of my account before I go on a late night spending spree at some point.
Just in fairness to you, Alex, this really is a timely reminder because this process, we did start talking about this two years ago. And it never really took off for a variety of reasons. So. Recent events have really helped jog our memory and we must now continue to move this forward because grant funding is available through. Through the trust as Bob says, and in fairness, we should have moved forward on this a little quicker than we have done. So. It's a timely reminder and we just need to continue the process. So don't worry about the can of worms incident.
No worries. I'll send it over to you, Bob. As soon as you send me the details, I'll put some money in.
I think it's, I think actually ironically, it's triggered off for a problem that we've got to sort and I think it's. When it's sorted, it'll look a hundred times better, you know.
I have to say that brief site meeting we had with MG Evans and they were very amenable, very helpful. And we were looking at bits of the masonry and chunks of it were crumbling off in their hands. I, in fairness, hadn't realised. On part, not all, but on part of the memorial, what a poor state it's in. So it is, time is of the essence in honesty and we do need to move forward on this one. So we'll see what progresses, but thank you for your efforts on that, Bob.
Okay. Where are we now? That's it? Clark's report done? Yep.
Is that Clark's report? Okay, thank you for that. So we now move to item eight, county and district councillor reports. I've not seen anything. Have you received anything?
Not a thing, no.
Okay, well, that's unfortunate and we haven't got James with us this evening to give us the verbal report, but. Maybe next month. Okay, well, we'll move straight on then from item eight to item nine, planning, Bob, any receipts, any information?
Yeah, we've got. Five applications. Three, one is 341 Litchfield Street, two-storey extension, covered patio to the rear. That's pending consideration. We've got 12 Gainsborough Drive, Myloke. That is a first floor extension to side, including rear-facing dormer. That's pending. Then we've got the Peninsula Takeaway, Seven Coatesall Street. Installation of three illuminated fascia signs and also Peninsula Coatesall Street, installation of a roof light. So that one. And then finally, what have we got here? We've got. Direction of single-storey extension to front and sides. 23 Gainsborough, that's just out of the road from the other one. And that's also being considered. The only other thing that came up was that Jenny got in touch with me about a pet shop on Litchfield Street. Saying that it was being converted from a pet shop to some kind of takeaway. So I got on to Don Wynn, who's on the enforcement side at Litchfield District Council. And he came back with the following. He says, I can confirm that the pet shop is being bought by a guy who will be opening a deli-type takeaway called. The Faisley Deli Limited. I've spoken to him and he will be selling predominantly cold foods, that's sandwiches, salads, but does not want to sell. But does want to sell a few hot things such as paninis, soup and jacket potatoes. He said the hot food will be heated as opposed to cooked. And as long as he does this, the business will still remain as a class A1 shop. So no planning permission will be required. He has been advised that the amount of hot food sold. Should be kept to a minimum or else he will be getting close to class A5, which is a hot food takeaway. And this will require planning permission.
Margaret would like to come in on this.
Can I just say, we passed it today and as we drove past, it actually said eat in or take away. Yeah.
I don't know whether the eating compromises, potentially compromises the licence.
I'll ask Don, I'll ask Don Wynn as to, you know, what he thinks, so.
Maybe the issue is cold food versus hot food. I don't know, as you said, that. Margaret's corrected, they'd say.
Eat in or take away.
Take away.
Can I just come in with that one as well? I do have to declare an interest because I know the person opening it. But I've actually had my first bit of patchwork in a long time from Faisley about this. Somebody asking the same question, does it have planning permission? And he says that he lives on Dharma Road, just off Deer Park. And he says that none of his neighbours or the people he knows next to it or around it have been informed. He says there are no allocated parking spaces for staff, delivery drivers or customers, only the pavement. Access to the rear is gated after six o'clock, so this is going to be a major issue if people park there on the pavement of the road, which is dangerous, obviously, especially for mums and dads collecting kids from the nursery. Also. This will create, this person reckons it's a problem for greater manner visitors popping in and out to go and get food, especially waiting for the 110 bus. It goes on and on. It's a long message, but basically that they're worried about it. Now, when I say I declare an interest, they aren't close friends of mine, I just know who's doing it. And I know that their intentions are good to make a cafe, so they told me. But I don't know anything other than that. So that's as far as I know.
Okay.
Mr Mayor, what Alex has mentioned, shall I put that in the same email to Don Wynn on the enforcement, say. Have they noted the fact of that? Nobody's been notified. He'll probably say, well, because planning permission wasn't needed. But also the parking is a good one because next door is Faisley Signs. And when he's got people there, they park all over the place. Admittedly, they're not there long. But it's worth checking out that one. That's a good one, actually.
I think it's worth mentioning the parking issues as well as the other items that you brought up. I guess in a way, yes, if no, if planning permission isn't required, Alex, I guess that's why the local people have not been notified. And been able to formally comment or complain. But I guess there's nothing to respond, nothing to stop the local neighbours contacting LDC planning directly anyway, and I would encourage them to do that. But you may as well make that point.
I think there's a, I think there's a. A feeling which is probably completely unfounded that the landlord, who I believe is the Orkotts, but I could easily be mistaken. Are kind of pulling a fast one, letting someone in there, but I don't think that's the case at all. I just think that's maybe. Maybe the law is being followed, but people possibly are interpreting it in other ways. It would be my opinion.
I mean, we can make the point, we don't, I mean, we don't want to stymie or stop a new business from taking off. We should encourage that, but if there are issues that are going to impact on the local community, we have a right to make those points.
Of course. It's obviously not for us as a council just to dictate what kind of business goes in there, as long as whatever business goes in there is doing the right thing.
Exactly, exactly. But. Right, okay. Any other planning matters, Bob?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Right, so. That's item nine. Item 10 then, Bob, correspondence received, please.
Yep, we've got Litchfield District Council. First one is that the district council. Are going to have a parish forum meeting on Thursday this week. It will be a Zoom meeting. So if anyone would like to join the meeting, I can send ID and passcode if you would like to. Attend the Zoom online meeting of the parish forum.
What date's that, Bob?
Seventeenth, that's Thursday this week.
Thursday, oh. Can you send a link?
Yeah, send to Brian, send to.
Please, yes. He's just closing that.
Yeah, no problem. Then there's lots of stuff comes through from Esther Epstein at the district council. The first one is about the opening of the new bus station toilets. The next is about business grant scheme. The bank waste was not going blue bins, details sent out. Litchfield Visitors Information Centre reopens. This one here is from Debbie Morgan at the district and it's electoral registration, the annual canvas and canvas reform information. For the electoral registration. We've got a bit of a notice here, which I'll put in the notice board and it's about information sheet for elected members and senior leaders. The annual canvas and canvas reform. Shall I send that to you, Brian, to have a look at?
Yes, please.
Yep, okay. Esther's back at it again. She says. Feel the love of local business, very expressive that. And also voter registration reminder. The Great British September Clean-up, there was evidently, that was organised. It's on from the 11th to the 27th of September. I bet Rob Pritchard knows about that. Oh, they give notice. I don't know whether any of you know Tony Nichols evidently passed away. From the council. Oh, and the district council are starting socially-distanced guided tours of the city of Litchfield. Crikey, there's another one here. David Leighton Bailey. Passed away. Don't know who he is, don't know the gentleman. Council pays respect to Doug Constable. Crikey, another one. That's three. Never had three like that before. Lesley Bennett, Brian, has sent, I think she sent yourself some added information.
Bob, we need to revert this to confidential.
Oh, yes, okay.
You've got to talk about it's confidential. Bounce that, please.
Then, are you struggling to pay your rent? The council may help with discretionary housing payments. That's it, to Litchfield District Council. Staffordshire County Council, they have a new format whereby. Reference Covid-19, a chance to have your say on their website. And also they have on the website, the Staffordshire Archive and Heritage Details. Plus Art Connected Update, again, it's on their website. That's the Staffs County Council. We've got information here from Staffordshire Parish Council's Association. And basically, I won't read it, there's quite a lot of it, but basically it says that. Parish Council's Association and the National Association of Local Councils. Taking into consideration this. Six number of meetings that they advise all parish and town councils to continue to have. Zoom meetings, not to our face-to-face. Mr Ian J. Dodson, CBE, HM Lord Lieutenant of Staffordshire. Has written to all parish councils to thank them for their help and endeavour in dealing with this Covid. Virus and it's a personal message of thanks from Her Majesty the Queen. Ian being the official representative of the Queen in Staffordshire. I did discuss this one with the town mayor. We had a letter from Eon saying about socks, low-pressure sodium lithium. That they're not going to support it in the future and probably the best thing is to let them replace it at their will, the unit. The Cooperative Bank, who we deal with. I do, there's two branches nearby, one in Solihull and one in Birmingham. And what it is, is that they're going to close the Solihull branch. And I have been in touch with the Birmingham branch and going to try posting off any receipts that we get. I mean, at the moment. We're only getting receipts from Slimming World in the town hall. But as people come back, I'll say to them, we don't want cash, won't handle cash, it's cheques or direct debit. So that's easier to deal with the bank and not have lots of 50p given to you. Chris has sent a new poster, which I'll put up in the notice boards. I don't know whether anyone can see it. That's Chris Pincher. He sent out a new one that we can pull up. And that's it. Okay.
We've got one item to add, Bob, which you did allude to a little earlier in terms of correspondence. And a couple of weeks ago, I received a letter from a lady in Bone Hill, Christine Doyle. Who is very keen on starting a bicycling and tricycling to happiness community group. Which is excellent if she's keen on starting, you know, from a health point of view, a bicycling group. This, her plan is to have it wider than Faisley wide to include Tamworth. I wondered what help I could give. I said, well, clearly it would be up to her to commence any group and get people involved. It would have our moral support, but I did say to her, if she's including wider than Faisley, I pointed out that we're part of Litchfield District, rather than Tamworth Borough. That she might want to contact Chris Pincher, our MP, who may be able to assist her with some, assist them with some endorsements if she wants to make it. You know, wider than Tamworth and Faisley, but she's keen to start this cycling group. One aspect of it which could occur, she talked about having cycles. Publicly available, how this would be controlled, I don't know, that would be up to how they organised it, but. Publicly available cycles to people and asked about the possibility of putting a cycle rack on Bone Hill Green. I said, I didn't know, but presuming, Bob, that would be owned by Staffordshire Highways, the green. So I dropped an email to Tim Hemmingsley just to outline this lady's desires. And what would be the opinion of Staffordshire County Council in terms of. If it fitted what she wants to do, if it suited what she wants to do, putting a cycle rack with publicly accessible. Cycles onto Bone Hill Green and I've done that on her behalf. I've not received anything from Tim yet. I wouldn't expect at the moment because it's very early days. But that was this lady, Miss Christine Doyle, who was very keen on this cycling community group. And that's all I have to say at the moment on the matter.
Do you mind if I just jump in as well? It's probably not the right time to do it, probably remiss of us, but I don't think we've mentioned the passing of councillor Alan Pearce. He was a Litchfield District councillor for Faisley from 2011 to 2015. I think it was a couple of months ago, probably just after our July meeting. So it might be worth recognising, he did a lot for Faisley and I think when Olivia and I were first standing just before 2015, he was very helpful. He lived just up the Sutton Road, just as you go past Gainsborough Dry on the right. So he'd be well missed in Faisley.
What's this gentleman's name again, Alex?
Alan Pearce. P E A R C E. Yeah, he was a councillor from 2011 to 2015 and quite publicly said that he didn't enjoy it. Not because he didn't enjoy being a councillor, he liked being there for the people, but didn't enjoy the bureaucracy of life as a councillor. But he was always very happy to help local people as well. And he helped me and Olivia an awful lot when we first started in politics.
And he passed away when? Sorry.
It was summer. I think it was maybe July. I don't know, Olivia, can you remember? Was it July? It was definitely around July-ish.
I'm not sure, but I can double check. But yeah, I just really want to echo Alex's sentiments as well. It's been a tough 2020.
Yes, well, thank you. Thank you for that, both of you. If you'd like to record that, Bob, please.
Yeah, got it.
Councillor Alan Pearce, thank you. Just moving on and while we talk, you spoke, Bob, about the usage of the town hall. We haven't got a specific agenda item for this, but it might be pertinent. At the moment to talk about the future opening of the town hall. I mean, clearly Bob and Karen have put a lot of effort in terms of ensuring the town hall. If it were to be made available, is compliant with current laws and regulations. In terms of controlling the toilets, locking things. in terms of controlling the toilets, locking things down and having sanitizers, et cetera, et cetera. The only group that we've allowed in so far, correct me if I'm wrong here, Bob, is Slimming World because they were very keen to get back. We did say that we would make a joint decision at this meeting in terms of reopening the hall. But at the moment, Bob, who have, who have we got waiting in the sidelines to return?
Well, we, we've got, actually, there's about, there's about three of our users haven't responded to inquiries. So we're in a bit of a limbo with those three. We've got a very, we've had, I refer to them as boy to, at the moment, we've got Slimming World in there. We've got these boys toys, these big guys who come in the hall and race model, model cars around the hall. They can get a lot there, but their secretary has said to me about coming over next week to have a look and have a chat. He's told me he's prepared to limit it to six because the six that he's spoken to are prepared to pay more. And also they've got quite surplus funds in, in the club sort of thing that they can top it up with. So we've got those. But ones such as the Bingo, I've got reservations about the Bingo because they, first of all, I don't think they're going to comply with the regulations. They've already said to me about, because so many of them are related and know each other, there's no need to have these bubbles and this sort of thing. An intermix. Also, I have a serious concern on a personal note that I know a lot of these characters myself. And they're all, most of them are over 70, into 80 and even up into the 90s. And if we did have a problem there, I think, you know, it'd be terrible. But there's no pressure at the moment coming from the user groups to come back, apart from Slimming World. We have had an inquiry, an inquiry from a new one, a small group dealing with toddlers, but that again raises problems because I've been in touch with Bernardo's, who specialise in looking after, professionally looking after toddler groups. And they, they are not keen to restart with that, where toddlers are mobile. Because, you know, I know myself with toddlers, you can't, you can't stop them wandering around. So there's a lot of ifs and buts at the moment. I'd like to get boys toys back in, in there. I tried to, there on a Saturday, I tried to make contact with Lee Bates and I did speak to Lee about four weeks ago and we agreed we'd see how things evolved. But Lee organises meals for the senior citizens. And again, this is a bit of a difficult one. I've been in touch with environmental and then they've told me, environmental Litchfield have said, you know, using of kitchens is restricted to one person. People cannot go in there. It's a bit of a minefield. So I think if we just wait and see how it evolves really over the coming weeks. I know that Olivia, you've done a lot of inquiries on behalf of the community centre. So I don't know whether you, you can add anything to what I've said.
Yeah, nothing helpful really. It's really difficult to get any proper guidance or to find any understanding of what governance you're actually working under. So I mean, I've been in contact with various other groups, just like Bob has. I got in touch with our insurers as well because our insurance policy since the pandemic has completely changed in terms of users in the building. So that's been quite difficult. We've had Slimming World back. We've also got One Dance School back currently. They're the only two that I've allowed back because they were the only two that really were able to prove to me that they would put in strict regulations, strict rules. They've done risk assessments, you know, and their first few sessions actually went down and checked just to be sure. So I think absolutely Bob, you're doing the right thing. It's a, it is a bit of a tricky one. I mean, we're not allowing any groups that deal with young children back into ours. Friends United, which is our senior citizen group, I've said no to. They've now taken to, they come along every Thursday where their usual booking slot is with, with a fold out chair and they sit outside the building, socially distanced on the car park. But I just can't, I can't risk it in, in the building. So, yeah, it's a difficult one.
So you make a case by case assessment then, Olivia?
Yes, yeah. I've basically said to each group, you've got to be able to show me that you're taking it seriously. If you, if you only say that you're having, you know, 10 members in, that's what's going to happen. You know, if you say that you're going to put this procedure in place, that's what's going to happen. If you want a one-way system, I've been opening up the fire exit doors so they can have the one-way system. And, and yeah, once I feel like they've really got it, then I do let them go back in. Because there's some groups that don't understand all of that and they just want to start back up. And I think that's where the risk lies. I think if you've got group leaders that are quite strict, it's a bit more secure.
One point I'd like to make, talking about the Bingo, I read on, a few days ago on the BBC News website on the question and answer thing, referring specifically to Bingo. If it's a licensed, formally licensed Bingo hall, I think they're allowed to reopen, providing they have little hubs of six people in a group. But he said definitely if it was a casual group in a community hall, i.e. the town hall, that is not acceptable. It doesn't meet the rules. So I think specifically Bingo Group, for all the reasons we understand, would be no. I must admit, I share Bob's opinion that what the gentleman, we, we call the Boys Toys, they seem to be, I mean, Bob's yet to meet with them, but they seem to be willing to comply and probably will be well controlled with six people. Like you said, Olivia, Slimming World are a fairly strict regime and seem to be reasonably well controlled. I think we'd have to look at the others on merit. But in principle, what do councillors think about subject to specific assessment and specific unique decisions? What do councillors think about opening the town hall again, as I say, on a case by case basis?
I would say it's fine, but we, we would need to provide a specific risk assessment because the onus would actually be on us as a venue to ensure that we give them the opportunity to be in a safe environment. So that would be doing things like Olivia said, maybe a one-way system or working out how many people could be in there socially distanced, providing hand sanitizers, signs of that kind of thing. As long as we can do that and provide a risk assessment and provide a safe and secure environment, it's then over to the hands of the, of the group to, to, to do the safe thing. I think we should do, you know, we need the money just like anyone else at the moment. So why not?
Yeah, I think in fairness to Bob and Karen, you spend a lot of time, haven't you, Bob, ensuring that we are compliant with hand sanitizers and taping off areas and locking certain areas. So I think we're in a good shape, subject, as you say, Alex, to the group being fully compliant as, as a group.
Yeah, I mean, Olivia put me on to where to get the sanitizers from. And actually, people have, you know, Slimming World and I've had the mother and toddler groups and they're really impressed how many we've got in there. And the signage is all over the place. The only thing is you do get people abused. In every walk of life, you always find somebody who's kind of abused the setup. And for, for example, you know, how many are in there? Take the lady who runs Slimming World. She's very diligent and very concerned at getting everything right. But she hasn't got eyes in the back of her head, sort of thing. Like Slimming World, the one, I don't know whether you've had this, Olivia, but Slimming World have said, you can't, they, their people cannot use the toilets in whatever building they go in. So I mean, we, we put tapes up, we block off toilets and we put tape up. So as soon as Slimming World have been there, they've taken the tape down and used the toilets, don't even flush the toilet. But I have a word with the lady running the, and I think she said, I didn't see them. And one of the reasons is that in the town hall, the entrance is up the slope. But the exit is a different door right by the lady's toilet. So as she sees them leaving, she doesn't know, you know, she thinks they're leaving and she can't watch them all the time. So I did ask the town mayor about, has put in a couple of temporary, well, locks on to comply with this not using the toilet. So that's, that's life, that happens in everything, that you can't get 100%. So you've just got to try.
If we, if we agree, group comes, sorry to Bob, if we agree, group comes in and we find they're non-compliant, we just shut them down, basically. If they do the risk assessments and they make the promises and they have everything correct on paper, but they don't comply, we just have to shut them down, I think.
I'd agree. I think, I think the problem is, sorry to interrupt you, Bob, I'll say that I think the toilet thing probably is a specific Slimming World thing. There's no legislation saying people shouldn't use toilets. But I think that, I think that we need to be careful. I mean, for example, you know, what if you've got a, a meeting of, of, you know, Slimming World, but there was only two families there, but you know, it was, it was the Von Trapp family and, you know, and, you know, the Sylvanian families and there was loads of them. You know, you could have 50 people in the room and they're all, if they're all from the two households or they're all together. But these, this 30 rule is quite, it's quite ambiguous really because a drama group, let's say like Olivia and I's, the pantomime company can meet up in groups up to 30 because we fall under a certain thing. But whether the Bingo group falls under that thing or not. So that's the problem is, you know, there's, how do we know which groups? We, we need to sometimes trust that the groups know the rules. It's not for us to know their rules. It's just for us to provide them the safe space to implement the rules. It's a very difficult one, I think, as a venue owner.
The biggest thing that we had to change at the community centre more than anything was our cleaning schedule. So it was making sure, for example, we said that no more, because on multiple days, we have multiple hires. We've now basically said only one hire is allowed per day. So there's not multiple groups going in on one day. And in between each hire, the cleaner goes in. So it's quite a strict regime. And you know, and we've got her, the full PPE and everything like that. So it's, it's a lot more. I mean, bless her, she's probably going to be down there early in the morning tomorrow. She's been doing all sorts of things. But it's just making sure that if you're on top of whoever's been in, it can, yeah.
I think it's, I think the telling comment is to look at each one on an individual basis. That's what we want to do. I mean, Mandy, who runs the Slimming World, she, she, when I said to you, she's very good and very diligent, she is. But if she's talking to someone looking that way, she can't see, you know, if someone's abusing it by using the toilets. But I mean, that problem's solved now because we're going to lock the door. But, you know, she's pretty good. And I think, is your experience with Slimming World been pretty good? I'm impressed with them, actually.
Yes, I've got to say, my experience with Slimming World, we have another franchise group in called One Fit Mama, who've actually stopped operating. They tried to come back for a few sessions and then they've completely stopped operating until 2021 now. I do find that with the big franchise groups, I think because they all have a HR, that they have to be, you know, they respond to. There seems to be a lot more structure and a lot more rules that get filed down and they have to be following those. So. But yeah, Trace is the same with us, Slimming World, she's absolutely brilliant.
Yeah. I mean, we, we have down there, we have Staffordshire County Council Adoption Service, use the town hall. They've straight away said, we're not coming back till January. We're seeing how it all works out. And there's, there's this feeling of this undercurrent that a few groups are looking at that, are looking at it like that. So I think take it, take each one individually and, and analyse each one.
What I'd like to do though, I don't know what councillors think, but because this is a critical issue, I'd like to have a proposer and a second and take a vote. There are five of us, so we are core on this. So, you know, I think what we're saying is probably between Bob and myself and we'll widen the discussion as required on a per group basis. But each group, as Olivia's done with, with the community centre, we'll assess them on their merits, on their risk assessments and our opinion as to their ability to, to main, you know, to comply. We will do that. But in principle, could I have a proposer and a second to agree that we open the town hall, please? Can I thank you Sue and thank you Olivia? And could I ask for a vote then, councillors, please? Okay, thank you. I don't need to add in. So that's a unanimous vote and we had the proposal seconded that we, we will open the town hall for public use on a group by group basis. And each group will be rigorously assessed by the town clerk and the town mayor. And we'll widen that to the, to the leader and others if there are any contentious issues at all. So thank you for that, councillors. Right, we went off piece a little bit there because that fell in at the end of correspondence. So apologies, but that is a critical point. We should have made a specific agenda item on that. We're now down to town mayor's powers to act. Anything there we need to cover, Bob?
Yes, just record, related to Covid, actually, in that sense. The town mayor agreed to purchase a small stock of plastic chairs which are easily washable. The Covid signage which we purchased, the dispensers, the sanitizers, gloves, masks, cleaning materials that specify they kill the virus, plus the installation of these two locks on, on these two doors. That's during the last month. In fact, the locks happened today. So that's the latest one. Okay, Mr Mayor?
Thank you for that, Bob. Item 12, authorisation of non-confidential play.
Yes, HM Revenue and Customs, that's 57916.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Item 13 then is the exclusion of the public and press. We now come to the confidential section of the town council meeting. So on this Zoom meeting, Olivia or Alex, could we disconnect the public feed, please? And just check that that's operated so we can continue on confidential.